It's written in red, I have to ask you.
It's red.
Like to call this meeting to order. Mr. City Attorney, are there any things to report from closed session?
There's nothing to report out, thank you.
Okay. Chief Shorts, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Chief. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lister?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes?
Here.
And Mayor Thomas is absent this evening.
Are there any items for agenda review tonight? Seeing none?
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Right, at this time, if any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest for any reason, why that matter, why that member must abstain from consideration on any matter of this agenda, he or she should declare at this time. Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, Presentation of Certificate of Appreciation to outgoing Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Member and Management Analyst Julia Ramirez is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers. This evening, we recognize an outgoing member of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. The committee members are committed to the city's continued efforts to provide service and community improvements to low and moderate income residents. During his tenure, this committee member diligently reviewed, evaluated, and recommended funding allocations which benefited Simi Valley residents. Please join me in congratulating the outgoing committee member, Mr. Harry Van Dyk, on a well job, a job well done. He's unable to join us this evening, but we will mail his certificate to him.
Excellent, and Harry, if you're listening, we miss you, wish you were here, and wish you well, and I wish I could have shaken your hand, but I'll do that another time.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports, and we have no public speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, the next on the agenda is item 3A1, Appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee and Management Analyst Julia Ramirez is presenting this item.
Good evening, once more. The five-member Block Grant Advisory Committee was established by the city council in 2006. Members are appointed to provide funding recommendations on annual block grant applications. One committee member is completing his term on December 31st, and to fill his vacancy, the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce nominated Anthony Angelini. Mr. Angelini is in attendance this evening, and I see he has stepped forward. Mr. Angelini is a Ventura County native and a Simi Valley resident who is currently pursuing his master's degree. He volunteers on numerous community organizations and holds leadership positions in many of them. He is employed by the chamber as Director of Tourism and Government Affairs. It is recommended that the city council approve and the mayor appoint this nominee to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Board for his respective term.
Shall we do the motion first?
I move that we appoint.
Second.
We want you, Anthony.
The motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Mr. Angelini. I present you with a volunteer pin. Your volunteer work in the city has been numerous and been volumous. We got the opportunity to sit on the Youth Employment Services Board together, and your service there was exemplary, and I'm very pleased that the chamber chose you to represent on this very difficult board. The decision-making process is crucial, and a good mind like yours is going to do well in this job.
Thank you. Do you want your mom to come up and be part of the picture, too?
She's fine.
Okay. I love it.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 4, Public Statements. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council says there are no public hearings under Agenda Item 5 this evening. Agenda Items 4 and 6 are combined, and the council will hear public statements under this Agenda Item 4. Agenda Item Number 4 and Agenda Item Number 6 are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called in in the order which their car was submitted to speak for this public statement, item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Each person addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
My only comment, and we decided that we should be starting public comments this way on the council, is that for anyone that is speaking, we don't have the opportunity of responding directly with you. It's not a dialogue, but we do appreciate hearing from you and want to hear what you have to say. We just may not be able to respond from the dais. With that, we can call our first speaker.
Maribel Pantoja?
Yes, okay, thank you. Good evening, city council members and city staff. My name is Maribel Pantoja. I live in Simi Valley, and I'm a student at CSU Channel Islands. I'm also a volunteer with a community organization called Buena Vecina, which is Spanish for good neighbor. I am here tonight to share some exciting news with the city council and the general public. The good news is that a new law was passed this year that will open up new opportunities to address the need for more affordable housing. The new law is Senate Bill 4, Affordable Housing on Faith and Hunger Education Land Act of 2023. This law will take effect on January 1st, 2024. Thank you. SB 4 will allow faith institutions such as churches, synagogues, and mosques, along with nonprofit colleges, to use portions of their property to build affordable housing by right. SB 4 is a powerful new tool to empower religious communities to take an active role in addressing the crisis we are currently experiencing due to the inadequate supply of affordable housing. This law unlocks new land for affordable housing production, creating opportunities for veterans, seniors, peoples with disabilities, low and moderate income earners, and other community members in need. Another major group that is impacted by the high cost of housing is young adults, people like me, who would love to establish a home, plant roots, and raise a family here in Simi Valley, but we are currently priced out of the market and left with few choices but to leave the community. SB 4 will allow churches and nonprofit organizations to help alleviate the housing affordability crisis by building safe, stable, affordable residential units on their properties. The law requires that 100% of the housing developments must be affordable. SB 4 will empower faith institutions to expand and deepen the role they play of serving God and the needs of our human family. I will read just Galatians, Chapter 5 and Verse 14, which says, "For the whole law is fulfilled in the one word: You shall love your neighbor as you love yourself." Equally important, SB 4 can boost the local economy by generating jobs for construction workforce. We encourage the city to reach out to local congregations to make them aware of the Affordable Housing on Faith and Higher Education Lands Act, and to encourage them to consider how they may be able to apply this law on their properties. Thank you for your time, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, that was the only speaker we have this evening. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 4, A City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Councilmember Lister?
Thank you. First of all, I want to make it very clear, I did take a shower today. The reason there's gap here is not, it's just where we're supposed to sit. Actually, Mayor, but I want to say thank you for coming and speaking to us, appreciate it. And also wanted you to be aware that as we, as we worked on our general plan and our housing element, you will find that almost all of the area that is, like on Sunlow and the different places where there are churches, a lot of it already has been zoned to allow for housing density, et cetera. So just so you know, I just want you to be aware that we, the city is very mindful of that need for housing, and we have, I think specifically in our housing element, have worked to make sure that those areas that you're speaking of may put housing up and affordable, we'd love affordable housing there. So I just want you to be sure that we are supportive of your efforts, and so thank you for coming here tonight. Appreciate it. Those are my comments.
Councilwoman Kavanaugh?
Just real quick, thank you. Buena Vecina, right, did I say that? Okay. I hope you frequent us a little bit more and tell us more about, I know you do more in our community than we're aware of, so I'd really like you to be able to share that with us whenever you can. All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, and for myself, thank you for bringing it up. You said get the word out, congratulations, you just started the ball rolling, so, good job.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 7, The Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar. Mayor Pro Tem?
I did have a question, but I thought, first of all, I thought you were going to pull the even ones, and I was going to pull the odd ones.
I know, we joked about that.
Actually, I would just, a quick question for, on item number 6. But if we want to vote on the first five and then either ways, absolutely fine with me.
We can go ahead and answer your question.
Is that all right, okay. And this is really a question for the chief. This is about the, about the purchase of 11 Dodge Durango Pursuit utility vehicles. And I know in the past that we have used Ford, Ford util, Ford interceptors that, and I guess my question is, are you comfortable that these Dodge Durangos are just as good? And I mean, are they, I know, I know you're used to using a certain vehicle, you get used to it, you have all, and would it be worth waiting just to continue with what we know? Or is it okay to mix the vehicles? Do you have any thoughts about that?
The reason why we're, we normally stay with, in terms of marked cars.
Sure.
Unmarked is a whole different discussion. In terms of marked cars, we normally stay with the, a consistent platform, because in terms of fleet management, it's easier if they're using the same parts and on the same maintenance schedule. The issue is, is as you know, that there was a strike. Ford also went through some different issues where they retooled, and hybrids are no longer specialty vehicles, and they're putting that in some of their main plants, and they had to retool for the 2024s. So what that did in terms of pursuit vehicles, it set them back really, really far, where their orders are going to be protracted out. Ventura PD, Oxnard PD, and several other PDs up and down the state, because police, marked police vehicles in specifically are driven pretty hard. They're running 24 hours a day, have made the decision to move to the Dodge Durango package, which has been used, by the way, throughout the country for years. So it's just kind of a supply and demand issue that makes us make this transition. The worst thing that could happen to us is not to have operable vehicles, which really creates a service issue. So, you know, we're going to pivot this time around. If Ford is able to get tooled up and get back on a normal cycle, we would revisit going back to them as our primary vehicles.
And I guess that was my question, going to be my question, whether you're going to, is this a permanent change? Or is this just going to?
Not in my mind, in my mind, this is just temporary, but we'll have to see. There are several organizations throughout the country that Ford has backed up on orders, and many of them much larger than us, where they owe them hundreds of vehicles. And so where we would be in their air traffic control, if you would, is unknown. And I've actually gone through the effort of speaking to one of their high-level managers about how backed up they are on it.
Well, I hope this works out well for you, thank you. I appreciate your answers. So I'd be happy to move passage, oh, it's already been moved, sorry. Mike, it's been moved and seconded.
Call for the vote?
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 8A, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1353 for City Initiating Municipal Code Amendments Z-S-2023-0006, To amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to modify standards for residential off-street parking, front yard landscaping, rear yard vehicle access gates and screening, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as amended. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1353 and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for City Initiating Municipal Code Amendments Z-S-2023-0006, To amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to modify standards for residential off-street parking, front yard landscaping, rear yard vehicle access gates and screening, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
No presentation, this is a second reading, so we just need a.
I'll move the second reading.
And I, and I will say that it looks like all the changes were captured well and correctly that we approved last time.
Call for the vote?
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 8B, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1354 for City Initiating Specific Plan Amendments SP-S-2023-0001, To amend the West End Specific Plan W-E-S-P to modify the land use matrix for commercial and industrial uses, update commercial development standards, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as amended. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1354 and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for City Initiating Specific Plan Amendment SP-S-2023-0001, To amend the West End Specific Plan W-E-S-P to modify the land use matrix for commercial and industrial uses, update development standards for retail stores, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from additional environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1354.
Call for the vote?
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 8B, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1354 for City Initiating Specific Plan Amendments SP-S-2023-0001, To amend the West End Specific Plan W-E-S-P to modify the land use matrix for commercial and industrial uses, update development standards for retail stores, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as amended. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance Number 1354 and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for City Initiating Specific Plan Amendment SP-S-2023-0001, To amend the West End Specific Plan W-E-S-P to modify the land use matrix for commercial and industrial uses, update development standards for retail stores, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the additional, from, determination that the amendments are exempt from additional environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1354.
Call for the vote?
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Councilwoman Lister?
You are so delighted not to have to give the report first, aren't you?
I am.
I'm sensing there's some real glee with this. Now, this may be the record for one of our shortest council meetings, but thank you, everyone, for being here, I just want to say that, appreciate it. So, in the last two weeks, there's been some fun, interesting events that I've attended, and I'll try to be brief. On Tuesday, December 5th, I attended the Simi Valley Ed Foundation Teacher of the Month presentation, which was given to Mr. Oigar Linskog, who is the machine shop instructor at Simi Institute for Careers in Education. And he, when you read his credentials and what he's done for that program, it's truly outstanding. And so I will say that more I hear of what the Simi Institute is doing, they're really training some fabulous people. And so I would encourage people to look at their catalog and sign up starting in January again. And he, I, as I read the reviews from his students, he would, if you have any interest in learning about machining, take a class from him, it'd be fabulous. So that was December 5th. December 6th, I attended the press event, which was the check presentation by Assembly Member Jackie Irwin to the Rancho Susana Park and Rec Department, where basically she caused the state budget to allocate $2 million for improvement of the public community pool area. I want you to know what my efforts were there, and I spoke with Dan Perrinick. I said, okay, let me understand this correctly. The project is four mil, about $4 million. So the state has now given $2 million. The, the school district's going to give a million, and Parks and Rec said they'd give a million. We gave a million, but that means you don't need our million. So we could take our million back and put it towards an outdoor amphitheater or whatever. I, I, so anyway, then he proceeded to tell me about some other plans that, that the funds were already committed. But anyway, I just wanted to share that, I, you know, I tried, I knew that, anyway. But the funds, actually, it's the first time I've seen the pool completely drained. And, you know, I've seen pools, pools drain before, but usually not when they have a deep end, a high dive component. And there's a pretty deep hole there, I'm just saying, it was very interesting to see that, so. But some beautiful improvements are taking place, and, and that money from the state is specifically earmarked to improve the dressing room area and the locker room area. So that was, so it'll be lovely to have that in the spring and fall for our, our schools and all those taking lessons. On December 7th, I attended SCAG's Annual Economic Summit downtown. I know that Councilmember Mike Judge was there as well. It was interesting that they, they put together this economic outlook booklet. It was, and then they kind of paraphrased by county what they, what they have to say. And it was interesting, their summary of Ventura County. I won't read the entire thing, but just to read a paragraph from it. "Since the pandemic low in mid-2020, Ventura County gained more than 27,400 jobs, the most for any three-year period since 98 to 2000," which, anyways, probably should have said 2020. "Employment surged 4.2% in 2022, principally due to recovery pandemic impacted jobs. Year-to-date data suggests that 2023 job growth," of course, they're looking at, this was all last year, "will be 2%. Employment gains this year were largest in the healthcare and social assistance sectors." But I will copy this and share this with you, because it's just very interesting to hear what they have. It, it's basically saying that relatively flat in terms of our job growth. Our employment growth is expected to slow to less than 1% in 2024. Our employment growth is expected to slow to less than 1% in 2024. And unemployment will rise, pushing the rate toward 5%. That's their projection for Ventura County. But it was a very interesting series of meetings. Later that evening, it was great to join my colleagues, Councilmember Judge and Councilmember Kavanaugh, at the menorah lighting on the first night of Hanukkah at the Reagan Library. And it was lovely, I thought particularly moving, that given the events of this year, that that was done there. It was a beautiful outdoor event. And appreciated the remarks of my colleagues. And it was good to hear, to be part of that celebration. That was very significant. On Friday, December 6th, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Breakfast. And it was interesting that their speaker was Eric Lamarck. I didn't know that name. Maybe I should have. I guess if you've seen the movie Six Below, it's about him. But basically, he's the man that was lost outside Mammoth for eight days in freezing cold and lost, you know, lost his legs, but somehow survived eight days. And he'd been a... He was an athlete, a hockey player, and a snowboarder. And anyway, just a miraculous story of resilience and the indomitable human spirit, what can be done. So if you get a chance, you might look up his story, Eric Lamarck. Fun the events that weekend. I'll take you into next, the following week, December 11th, attended the Council on Aging, also with Councilmember Judge. We met the candidates who are interested in serving on that council. There are quite a few qualified candidates. On Wednesday, December the 13th, I attended the State of the College Address at Moore Park College, which was conducted by... Well, they had various speakers, including, of course, President Julius Soknow. I knew that, I know that. In fact, I saw him this weekend, Soknow, yes, I just had a brain moment. A couple of things that he shared that I thought were very interesting. It is absolutely approved that they are getting their bachelor's degree in their biotechnical field. That is, it is going forward. And they envisioned their first cohort of students, about 24 to 48 a year, will begin in the fall. Also, they talked about all of their capital improvement projects, what they would like to get done. He did say that they are trying to get a college bond on the ballot for the fall that would help with those capital improvements for Moore Park College, and I believe the other colleges. He also mentioned there was talk about that second bachelor's, the cybercrime that they were trying to get done. What he basically said is that it appears that it has been kind of sidetracked or waylaid primarily by the other California university system who are concerned about competition, in essence. He wouldn't say... I'm just being more blunt. I think that's... He was a little nicer. But the thought is that the degree at Moore Park level would be more technical in nature, the ones that would be running the programs, making it happen. Whereas that degree at the university level would be more designing the programs, et cetera. And there really is room for both. And he would welcome anyone who's willing to basically go on the offensive. And so if we are, as a body, want to write a letter of support or something, I think it would behoove us well. Also, on Wednesday, December 13th, I attended the Arts Commission meeting that was held here at our lovely C-Hall. And one of the things that came out of that, that we discussed, was an extension of our grant. There has been a grants given to performers who are entities that wanted to use the Cultural Arts Center. It came out of the COVID recovery funds, et cetera. There is still money left available in that grant. So we are pleased it's going to be extended into another year, possibly two more years. But the language was changed so that there was more monitoring, that there was some tweaking if it was a repeat customer and ways to encourage new customers, et cetera. And was that the day that was the wonderful holiday luncheon here that we celebrated here? It was a lovely gathering of... Anyway, it was great to visit with my city colleagues that are doing great things here. And so that was a... Yes, thank you for putting that together. That was a lovely holiday gathering luncheon. December 14th, I attended the Atreus Simi Hill Retirement Grand Reopening. Basically, I don't know that I call it reopening. I'd call it more grand remodeling celebration. But that was a lovely facility up Amadera. And that's about it. I will tell you, this weekend has been a crazy musical weekend for me, lots of fun harp things, which is my other alter ego. But I do have to share that I conducted Harp Extravaganza for the 25th year in a row. We had... Harp Extravaganza is a group of harps. Basically, I publish the music. Harps from all over who've never played together show up at a hospital in Pasadena. We had 27 harps, harps there playing holiday music there at the hospital. And that's one of my favorite ways to celebrate this beautiful time of year. And so that concludes my report and wish everyone a wonderful, happy Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, whatever they celebrate. Have a just a... May this be a joyous time for all. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. On December 6th, Wednesday, December 6th, I had my next-to-the-last EDC Executive Board meeting. So I'm chairing it, so that's... I said it was my last meeting. They said, "No, you still have one in January." So I do have one more executive board meeting. But it's been a great year. It's been... We've accomplished quite a bit. The EDC has done a fantastic job. At our annual dinner in January, we will be celebrating all of the wonderful things that have happened. They have made... We have gotten so many awards this year. None of them because of me, all because of staff, but I get credit for it, so it's kind of nice. But so we'll be happy to share all of those. We have a great staff there. On Thursday, December 7th, I also attended the Hanukkah celebration up at the Reagan Library. One of the key things about that is the program in the museum right now is Auschwitz, not long ago, not far away. So it was almost a fitting place to have the menorah lighting that first night. It was cold, but it was very heartwarming. There were a lot of people, I think they said about 200 people. And it was just a very nice event. So thank you to the Reagan Library and to the Chabad of Simi Valley for putting that on. On Sunday, December 10th, Ms. Karen Troop had her annual holiday celebration where she invites community members, people that have thanked her. It was a wonderful event. And it's good to see a lot of our community members get together. And Monday, December 11th, the most important day, my daughter's birthday. So I didn't do anything else. I worked and then we went to dinner. On Wednesday, December 13th, I also attended a second menorah lighting up at the Wood Ranch facility, the Wood Ranch Shopping Center. I have friends that are with Simi Valley Etz Chaim Temple. And when they found out, the three of us were up at the Reagan Library for the menorah lighting, they said, "Why didn't anyone come to ours?" So they invited me. I said, "Well, we didn't know about it, so we went to that one." She goes, "Well, we're having one on the 13th." I said, "Okay, I'll be there." And so I was. So it was a wonderful, small celebration. Rabbi Michelle, I think it's Pascal, I think it's her last name. I've met her a few times. She's a super-nice lady. There were a lot of kids there and some entertainment stuff for the kids. And it really, it was a nice event. And I was happy to attend. And that's pretty much it. Yesterday, I spent the day with my grandkids because it's Christmas. So it was kind of fun to do that. And I just want to wish Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and Happy New Year to everyone out there. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll make mine quick. On Thursday, December 7th, I was honored also to celebrate the menorah lighting up at the Reagan Library for the Shabbat here in Simi Valley. Biggest thing out of my calendar, though, last week, last couple of weeks, other than that menorah lighting, which, like everybody said, is very poignant being up there at the Reagan while they're celebrating, while they're displaying all the Auschwitz historical artifacts. It was Saturday, December 16th. I was at the 40th anniversary of Dr. Conkey's over at Sycamore Plaza. Great place, Simi Valley locals that have a coffee shop and a candy shop. And this is that time of year. If you need your candy or your coffees, make sure you go over to Dr. Conkey's. And that's the end of my report. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for my report, also brief, on December 5th, I attended via Zoom a Connect SoCal presentation from SCAG. That's their operating plan on housing and transportation. I got on an airplane on the 7th, arrived in China, and there was not one menorah lighting in China. So I did not attend those. But I did regret not attending some of the activities here in town. And then from Shanghai, I was able to attend the Arts Commission meeting chaired by Councilwoman Lister. And it was one of those great flawless moments of technology and timing that I could attend and participate. And again, thank you for your leadership on that council because I think it moves the arts forward in the right direction and also is fiscally responsible, use of the city's money. So thank you for that. And that is the end of my report. Any future agenda items? Seeing none. We don't have...
Actually, Rocky, did we want to write a letter of support for a baccalaureate degree? For the... Maybe it's out of our purview. Is cybercrime anything we...
Councilmembers are welcome to do it on your own, on your stationery, if you'd like.
Okay. I think that might probably is more appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we have no one to adjourn in memory of. So, meeting adjourned.